Special joint meeting of City Council and the Finance Advisory Committee of November 18th order. Recording Secretary, can you give roll call for City Council, please?
Zissada.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Howell. Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Seven present.
And Chair Neely.
Ms. Scott, would you please call the roll for the Faculty Advisory Committee?
Absolutely. Bangkok.
Here.
Calligan.
Here.
Neely.
Here.
Terazinski.
Here.
Four present.
All right, perfect. Moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zissada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Here. Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven eye.
The agenda has been approved by City Council.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Is second.
Second.
Thank you. Are you going to call the roll for us on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Bangkok.
Yes.
Calligan.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Terazinski.
Yes.
Four eye.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item D, public participation. We have one. Mr. Smith, would you come up to the podium, please?
I promise I will try to be three minutes.
You have to be. I'm sorry, sir, but I'll hold you to it.
No, I'm trying for two minutes and 30 seconds.
All right.
Hi, everybody. I am John Smith, President of Just Make It Happen, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I'm representing our Board of Directors tonight. We are requesting for a grant from the City of DeKalb for our 18th Annual Let's Dance Big Band Weekend. For your information, Just Make It Happen has four areas that we focus on for our community. One is to help citizens build healthy lifestyles through going to listen and dance to live big band and jazz dance. Two, pre-kindergarten through high school music education programs that we've designed over the years based on brain research, and it's designed as an artist and resident program for strings, brass, and jazz, and dance in honor of Duke Ellington's legacy. Community outreach at churches, you'll probably remember jazz at Pentecost in some of our churches, seniors, family, tis the season, Farm Bureau, you name it, we're ready to go. And then one of our most important things that we have not been able to address fully in helping this community build is our venues that advocate for professionals to be paid at a professional salary. You think about our culture, jazz and big bands are an American treasure to the world. If you know, we have probably 10,000 to 20,000 different bands that sold millions and millions of recordings, and thanks to the Congress in 1940s, they established a tax. If you want to know that unfortunate history that destroyed the entire culture of big band music, dancing music, ballrooms across the entire continent of the United States, I would be glad to give you that. So we are helping not only to preserve, but to celebrate our musicians. Our hiring practices at Just Make It Happen is that we hire NIU grads that have proven their worth. So in recordings or anything else, we give them first preference. For this weekend, in terms of impact for our City of DeKalb, we bring in over 500 people to DeKalb from over 10 states to DeKalb who stay at our hotels, eat at our restaurants, and purchase items from our businesses. This is a positive impact for the community. This event, Let's Dance, had been recognized by American Profile, a national magazine, for that said, "Go to this event for the entire nation." The net result of that, for the four years that they did that, was people coming from New Jersey, New York, Canada, Alaska, all over came.
Mr. Smith, I'm sorry, but you're...
We're done.
You're over the three.
If you have any questions, I would appreciate hearing from you. And what we will do is establish a contact meeting with the mayor.
Absolutely. Yeah, I've got you in my inbox, so we'll get that set up, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, moving on to Agenda Item E, consideration of the proposed FY 2025 budget. Can I have a... Well, I just don't need a motion. It's a consideration. So, City Manager, are you ready?
I am.
We're strapped in, ready to go.
I am. Thank you, and good evening, everybody. I want to make a couple introductions on this side of the room. The book of 337 pages that you're looking at or have looked at prior to tonight is not just the product of the work of the City Manager, but it's a product of department heads in particular, some of whom are represented here tonight. And most especially, I want to thank the person to my right, Susan Hauman, who's the Director of... well, Director of a lot of things, but Director of Financial Services, and our Senior Account, Megan Chalant, who is sitting at the end there in blue, and hiding in the corner over here, Michelle Anderson, our HR Director. Those three have been really pivotal, as they have in a lot of years, in pulling things together and also in doing the internal trend analysis, internal meaning we're looking at year in, year out, month in, month out, types of trends that, both on the revenue and the expenditure side. So I thank you all for your time and your work. What you're seeing tonight is in broad outlines, particularly in the General Operating Fund, very much what you've seen three times already this year since August. And the transmittal letter at the top of your budget looks pretty familiar. And in August, and again in October, and as we have worked, you know, tonight obviously toward toward closing in on the completion of the budget for 2025, we started with the Operating Fund, which is what most people are most familiar with in our community. It's the operating departments that we engage with, the police, fire, public works, administration, planning, finance, and community development in particular. And I'm not going to walk you through all those details. You've had a chance to look at these and to hear discussions on these. You know what our principal revenues are, and they're laid out on page four in your budget tonight. That chart hasn't changed since August, and invite any questions as we go along here. One thing that has been a little bit in local conversation and news in recent weeks has been property taxes. And it was just a week ago that the Council had a robust conversation about the library levy, which leads ultimately to a rate like all the other taxing bodies. And recommendation was made for the... for city officials and for library officials to get together. We did that last Wednesday. So the meeting last week was on Tuesday. I'm sorry. It was a day off because of the Veterans Day observance. But I want to thank that... I did give you a handout which illustrates where that would leave them in terms of out-of-pocket taxes with the... Obviously, we're projecting where it will be with equalized assessed value for the whole community, which is a key variable. But it would... it basically trimmed about $476,000 out of the library levy request. So that would leave them with a rate of .31043, which amounts to a break-even point of $423.98, which is what the... that proverbial average homeowner paid last year to the library in a proportional way. So pause here for a breath and questions or comments.
I think you summed it up well, the meeting that we had at 9:00 AM. And yeah, again, I want to thank Alderman Perkins, our library liaison, attending the meeting. And it was another robust conversation, but a really good conversation. And I think we established better communication on how next year will be handled. So overall, it was... it was a good meeting. It was a good meeting with their board. And the overall objective to hold the taxpayer harmless is going to continue. So it was really successful. Yes, Alderman, clear.
So that is a goal of the board, so we don't have to keep coming back and doing this dance year after year? Have we conveyed what reasonable or responsible is? And I guess that's what we're looking for, is some of that cooperation with what is reasonable and not have to keep coming back to have this conversation. So I'm interested in hearing... You mentioned the future, Mayor, what they have in store.
My hope is, after the discussion that we had and when we identified some of our communication breakdowns on what expectations actually are, that next year, one, will be more proactive. And I say "we," I mean the library, as well as the City Council, in establishing what the expectations are going to be based off of the EAV that we're going to have. And we're going to get ahead of that conversation so we can avoid a future situation like we did here recently. So I really think, and Alderman Perkins correct me if I'm wrong, but I really think we were overwhelmingly and abundantly clear on what we need to be doing in the future going forward.
Great, thank you.
Can't make any promises.
No, understood.
We'll let it play out, but we were pretty clear on that, yeah. Yes?
I just wanted to thank the three of you very much for making that visit, having those tough conversations, and achieving this result. I thank you very much.
You bet.
No problem. Happy to do it.
Okay, so the General Fund, Fund 100, number one, as I mentioned earlier, not only helps to fund and keep the juices going in our city departments, but the General Fund Reserve is important for a variety of reasons. It's our rainy day fund, of course, and so obviously it's there for use by the Council. It can be... Funds from that, that reserve can be voted on any given council meeting night, whether it's a special meeting or a regular meeting. We've been judicious about the building of that since it had fallen below our local statutory level, 25% of the annual expenditures. For the General Fund, it was down to 17-plus percent in early 2019. And it's hovering right now with our projected year-end at about 70%. And so that brings us... this is a rough segue to something which is very important to people listening in and maybe some people in the audience tonight, and that is that we're here to serve, right? And so the residents and businesses we serve have identified a number of things they want us to be doing with the money that they vote, or that the representatives vote and which they contribute to, and property taxes and sales taxes and the like. And one of those things is better streets, improved surfaces on our street networks, particularly on the asphalt, but just not the asphalt. And so in this budget, and I'm moving ahead a little bit now to the capital side, which we've talked about before, there is a record-breaking $4.5 million dedicated in 2025 for asphalt street maintenance. The average that we've tried to hit has been around $2.5 million for the last four years. Prior to that, the average was somewhere around $750,000, not enough to make a dent. And so that will be something of a blitz. After this year, what happens with the General Fund Reserve is something that we will be talking about, starting to talk about in July of next year, as we do every year. And there are lots of claims that could be made against it, and we've talked about the state pension crisis. We've talked about other purposes for it. We've been judicious in how we borrow, and the fruit of that, I think, is shown in two ways. One is on the General Fund side, looking in your background, there's a chart on page 11, which has a line roughly through the middle of it, if you want to take a second page to that. And that's there purposefully. It's not just a bad platen on the copier. It indicates that in six fiscal years, that includes next year's fiscal year, we'll have taken a million and a half out of our annual debt payments, and that returns us to a level of about, I don't know, 25 years ago. That could mean a couple of things. Oh, boy, we could borrow again. But it also means... I'm not suggesting that. But it also means that the General Fund as a whole has some revenue that it can use for the completion of the services that people demand most out of us. And we won't have to borrow that much again for a while, I hope. This is inclusive of the new fire station costs, which are being borne partly in terms of debt saver... service, excuse me, by the JMT Fund, which we'll talk about shortly. Okay, let me just buzz through water, and then we can slog our way through if you want, or we can... I can address the highlights that you'd like to talk about. So our Water Fund is the largest enterprise fund that we have. And as enterprise funds go, we've got... it's one of three major ones, one other one being the Airport and Refuge and Recycling Fund. The Airport Fund, like the Water Fund, is... we're hoping to end with a positive balance every year, a net balance that's positive. And with the Refuge and Recycling Fund, that's basically pass-through. We're not looking to make money in it. We're looking to cover our costs, and that's the way we've operated that from the beginning. So the Water Fund is not only solvent, but because of the prescience of the Finance Committee and the Council going back about six years ago, seven years ago, we have been putting money aside every year from our... from any cost of living increase in the water fees that our residents and businesses pay, and putting that into replacement or repair of underground infrastructure that has been aging. We're an old town, and we've got... still have some four-inch mains and some mains that are 80 and 90 years old. And no matter how we treat the water, water going through those older mains, cast iron mains, it doesn't have the quality that we like. And so we... and also in terms of fire... the volume and the pressure for fire protection, we want to get larger mains to provide the capacity that may be needed from time to time. So we're working on that, and we're working on that in a very deliberate way. And if you look on... again, in the Manager's transmittal letter, the highlights of that fund and its performance over the last five years or so is also highlighted in pages 20 and 21. Finally, by way of introduction, we have 30 funds. And if you look at page 22, you see a very busy spreadsheet that identifies every one of them, our projected fund balance at the end of this year for each of those funds, also the budget of revenues and expenditures for each fund, projected fund balance where it will be a year from now, a little bit over a year from now, and the percentage change. There are some funds that we purposely draw down. So if you add up all these, our revenues don't quite match the expenditures, but we draw them down, and then we get, as I was saying, Refuge and Recycling, if there's a little bit of difference there, and some others. Others, we really hope to maintain a net balance at the end of the year and carry that forward to the following year. How are we doing so far?
You're doing great. I just had one quick question.
Yes.
And it's going back a little bit, but our sales and use taxes went up. It looks like 1.5 million between...
So we've talked about... I know where you're going with it. We've talked about this a few times. Let me take you... come with us now to page four. This will clarify what's the issue. If you look roughly in the middle of that chart, you see sales and use taxes.
Mm-hmm.
And for... go to the column that says FY '23 actual. So obviously, we do our budget well in advance of when we get our audit done. So we're doing our budget now. The audit for '24 will not be presented to you until the end of June. And it's really the beginning of June that we get the final number from the auditor. So we didn't know until it was time to, you know, get going, that the actual for '23 on sales, state sales tax as an example, exceeded what we had budgeted for the next year. Now, we weren't facing a deep recession. We... it wasn't going to be another natural catastrophe, we're expecting. Why is that? Well, with the best information we had, which is usually three to four months lagging, and without the benefit of prophecy, we ended up way off, and it's a good thing. It's to our advantage here. So if you look at the bump, the percentage is higher, but it still is about... it's basically two years' worth of growth since the '23 to the '25. So it's still hitting about the $350,000 a year clip, a little bit more or less. Same with home rule sales tax.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why.
So that's why in your projections for '26, '27, '28, '29, it's back to that 300... 500,000 range?
Yeah, so it's... it's the way... it's maybe a lack of art, or it's trying to be too artful. So if the chart says we're comparing this budget year to that budget year, then you can't in the middle of that say, except for these four lines, it's all that same. And so in carrying that forward, it looks, wow, that's a crazy expectation. No, it's actually... it's actually in sync with what we know.
Thank you. Any other questions? Slog on.
All right. So that... those are the highlights. Now, every one of our... for the people that are in the audience tonight and watching, every one of our departments has a number of pages. We have a narrative for each of the departments. Each department head has to provide accomplishments for the year just ending and projections, goals for what... for the year that is ahead of us. And a little more color and pictures this year than we've seen in the past, and it'll be probably more next year. Then we have numerical budgets for each of the departments, showing three years of activity and then the next fiscal year, the proposed numbers for that. And I can pause any time if you want. I will draw your attention to just one. The Community Development Department budget, which is one of the smaller amongst all the...
What page?
Departments, but if you go to page 146.
Thank you.
You'll see, though, that there's a very detailed review of the year in terms of developments. And Dan Olson always does a very good job in projecting what might happen in the future, but also what has happened to date, and the detail is substantial. So if people want to know, well, what happened this year in terms of economic development? Say, well, I just happen to have these 10 pages here. Happy to share it with you. Okay. We... now, I'm going to take you up to some special funds, special revenue funds. We're at page 169 now. And we're going to go through a couple that, at the end of '24, are spent. And the ARPA Fund is one of those. That... there's still residual there that can be spent on almost anything that has to do with the general criteria, and we will spend that down in '25. The JMT Fund, which is an acronym, I'm sorry, I will spell it out. It's a ground... and then you won't remember. So we'll all call it JMT. It's Ground Emergency Medical Transportation Program. That provides gap funding to the city for... to cover the gap between what we do receive from the actual cost of our ambulance service, or for our ambulance service, and what we should receive in terms of Medicaid funds. And in 2019, we discovered this federal program, not particularly well advertised. And for a lot of years, we didn't benefit from this, but now we are getting, not 100% made whole, but substantially more than we were. And we decided, the Council decided, that rather than pouring that back into personnel costs, which it could do, because that's 80-plus percent of our costs, it's dedicated toward capital expenditures, particularly in the fleet that the Fire Department has to keep very, very efficient and very effective for the obvious reasons. That includes some very expensive pieces of equipment and vehicles, engines and ambulances and the like, obviously run in the millions. And we have a committee that presents goals to the City Manager, and then I present them to you. So that... those numerical and narrative explanations are on pages 171, 172. There's also an emergency assistance program that was created back in February of this year. And that, for the first time, has a couple budget pages, because there are funds there that nothing has been spent from that fund since February 2024. Transportation Fund, I want to linger on this just a little bit, because it's actually one of our larger funds. We usually talk about it when we're talking about whether by local ordinance we want to amend the fees that are charged for passengers on our bus system. And obviously, our bus system serves NIU, its students, faculty, and staff, as well as residents generally and visitors to our community. It's funded almost exclusively by state and federal grants, and it's an enormous amount of money on an average year. If you go to pages 179 and 180, you can see a couple of things. First of all, the pace of the funding annually, which is up around $10 million now, and how that breaks down. But also the capital awards, which are all steering toward the new transit facility. And we'll be giving a report to the Council right after the first of the year on that. We have some renderings now. I'm as eager as you are to get something going. The plans are to be... a bidable set of construction plans are to be done before the spring or around the March, middle of March, later part of March. We want to get to bid. We want to get construction going, at least certainly the site development going and underway, and the buildings starting to come out of the ground in '25. Questions about that? I talked about streets. Aside from a couple million dollars that are coming over from our General Fund Reserve, the largest sources of the street maintenance dollars are the Motor Fuel Tax Fund and then the city's General Capital Fund. The Motor Fuel Tax Fund is on page 185. It also provides money for... and this is state motor fuel tax monies. Our General Capital Fund, Fund 400, has the local fuel tax money and some other monies that come into that fund, which we have dedicated, much of which we have dedicated toward roads in '25. Some special service area funds, I'm not going to spend much time on these. They... we have not changed these for a while. The last one was the Hunter Ridge Book Special Service Area. That's still working. And there is, as you know, a potential transition in ownership of that, and we thought it was good to keep... of that, and we thought it was good to keep this running for one more year, just to see what happens there. And if we, we certainly don't want to go backwards in that respect. Want to have some means if we need to. And we come to TIF. We have, we don't have a, we have a TIF III fund. We don't have a TIF IV fund, because there's no TIF IV yet. This will be on your agenda next Monday, and then for a first reading, and then two weeks after that for second reading. If the council decides to have South Fourth Street TIF, then we'll amend the budget after the first of the year, create that, and put in a reasonable narrative budget and numerical budget for your review. Questions?
Counselor, or F A C?
I do it once.
All right.
On, on page ninety-seven, the H R budget, can you comment a little bit on the, the increase in wages? You know, if we look at the history, go back to twenty twenty-two, and it was a hundred fifty million, a hundred fifty thousand, I'm sorry.
Yep.
And now in twenty twenty-five, we're looking at two hundred forty-eight thousand, an increase of
This is H R?
Thirty-eight thousand, yeah.
Yeah, this is human resources. So when, when I arrived, we had basically one and a half people there. As you know, we've done a lot of hiring. It's not a passing thing. We're, we have a, there's a youth movement in our major departments, police and fire in particular. And there are people, we are, and, and we have people who are fairly new into the organization. We have quite a number of people who are aging, aging in their jobs, I guess you'd say, and are approaching retirement age. And so we'll have more turnover ahead. But mainly what we had, we had, we've had Michelle Anderson as, as the captain of the ship, and we have been very fortunate to have her through all of this. But over time, in the last four years, she's pointed out very clearly to me, there are a lot of things we needed to do in H R to bring ourselves up, up to speed in terms of our peers and, and what's expected of us at the state level and the federal level. We, we have done that. We have also had to be more, a little bit more involved in recruiting, because as you're hiring, we don't just put ads out and hope that people will come. We can go to colleges and junior colleges and other high schools and so forth to recruit, so we can build lists, hiring lists and so forth. We have also, I, I, we have people now who are fully trained and experienced in how to interview, also how to handle people who are having hit in a rough patch, and it's coming into their work life as well as their personal life. And so I, I think, and, and we are self-funded. So there was a time when Michelle was doing all of this. I don't know how she was doing it. She's sitting in the back and feeling very embarrassed right now. But not only were we hiring, and maybe five years ago, we weren't doing that much in terms, in terms of hiring, but what we were doing is steady pace, but not what we did over the last three or four years. But the, the proper attention that the person in that position has to do, we, we have, we're self-funded for a lot of things, and we have stop losses over top of that. We're still the good hands people for all of our employees. You have a comp injury. You have an insurance question for your children, or your spouse, or your family. It's, it's State Farm and all state, all rolled into one, every day, every way. And, and so we're, we're a, a substantial operation now. So that explains a good part of what's happening.
So what was the head count in twenty twenty-two, and what are we projecting it to be in twenty twenty-five?
If you look
Because what I'm, what I'm hearing is
If you look at the head count, you could, in the
It sounds like there's an increase in heads.
Yes.
The fifty thousand increase, yeah.
Yeah.
If you go to, I'm looking for our, where we count heads, literally.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry.
So one F T, you have budgeted increase in twenty twenty-five?
Yep. So you can see, well, we go back to twenty-two.
Over that couple of years, we've added two heads. So, so that's, that's the math
That's it. Yeah. Was there a question behind that?
No, no, I was just wondering what, what, you know, it's, the number itself, you know?
Yep.
Basically, increasing a hundred grand over a few years, you know, and then that, the number jumped out.
Couple positions.
But if you add a couple heads, well, that explains it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions so far? F A C?
Okay.
Counselor?
So in a little over a month, first part of January, every year, we look at two different programs that support our local human services agencies. And one of those is the Community Development Block Grant Fund Awards for the year. You know, there's the Human Services Grant for the year. And we, on the Human Services side, the cost of that is borne by the General Fund, and the money comes out of the Community Development Department. The C D B G Fund, which is on page two hundred, two hundred and one, and it's a narrative in numerical form, are, the, the two different budgets are, I think, self-explanatory. We've talked about who's served, and we have a, a full-time coordinator of the program that consists primarily of, of the grants that are issued by the council every year. There's, there's continuing and regular contact between Jennifer Yocum and the Human Service Agency. She's on a number of committees with her peers. One of her jobs is to continue to be in touch to see what the performance is based on the expectations in our grant awards. And each of the agencies that receives grants, it has to make regular reports to us. And at the end of the year, those, those are reviewed, and it becomes part of the, was it successful, a successful year in terms of the, the use of the funds? And that figures into how decisions are made about the next year's funds.
What's the reason for the big swings, you know, from four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, million, million, and now we're back down to three ninety-two and twenty-five?
Well, during COVID, our amounts were practically doubled, or more than doubled. But we're going down. Part of that is the, the loss officially in our census numbers by four thousand. And also that the funding generally has fallen off a little bit in the last couple of years. We're doing more, about as much with less, really, is what we're trying to do. Okay. Housing rehab fund is something that we're looking to basically, basically close out. We've been talking about this for about five years. We're just waiting for a couple of things that might arise that fit the original federal guidelines when this fund was created back in the nineties. And we used to have a revolving loan program, very specific guidelines with respect to housing rehab. And I think some of the things we've done, other programs we've had where we've torn down vacant and dilapidated properties and so forth would, would fit in, not quite. So we've got about forty, now it's down to thirty-seven thousand. Now it's down to twenty-two at the end of the year. So we've got one more demo that we're counting on for that. Porn fire insurance tax funds, that's a program that was created in nineteen ninety-two. It's, it's in conformance with state statutory provisions. That, that insurance fund comes to us with an average of around eighty thousand or so a year. The fire department is the beneficiary of that, and the makeup of the board is primarily fire current or former firefighters. And as long as the planned expenditures are within the budget, within the revenue that's received, the, the members of that board can define what the uses will be by state law. Debt service funds, touched on that a little bit. On page two oh eight, you can see the same chart that was in the transmittal. I think it's important to know where we are and where our, our debt capacity is. Now, I haven't gone in like, like the audit every year does in the great detail and done pages on where our capacity is and how it's compared to other taxing bodies. But I think we, we rank very high in terms of our prudence in terms of debt. Capital spending, if you don't mind, we'll, we'll go through that and we'll take a breath. If you go to page two thousand, or excuse me, two thousand, two hundred and fourteen, I'd be dead at this. You're going to see a general overview of what we're, where we've been and, and what we're looking to do. The, the narrative, I think, is worth reading. We have a new aspect to these various funds. That's our Station Four Construction Fund on page two sixteen and seventeen. And the eager young gentleman in the picture there have a reason to be. If you've driven down on West Taylor, you've seen the progress of the station. The paving is done on the outside, so that when the building is, is completed outside and inside in the spring, we won't have to wait a couple of months for paving to get the, the station open. So it's been going very well. I want to thank Urban Construction and, and also the architects for helping with that process. Then we get to Capital Projects Fund, and you can see that most of our, our allocation for this particular year is going to roads. About ten, a little over ten percent is going to vehicles. The airport, in terms of the local motor fuel tax allocation, gets about fifteen percent of that. But the roads get about seventy-four percent. This fund, by the way, because it's a general fund, capital fund, and does not have the same restrictions on it that, say, the M F T fund does, is the principal source of money for our Barb City Manor allocation every year. That's fifty thousand. Also, we have a non-TIF Architectural Improvement Program, which has been in place for about, this would be the third year in twenty-five, of seventy thousand. And that has been, been popular, not overwhelmed, but it's, it's, the, the demand has been pretty steady, and we've, we spent all of the allocation this year, and also in the first year, two years ago. Capital Equipment Replacement Fund. There's also five hundred thousand coming into that fund from the General Fund in twenty-five, to do two general things. One is to replace four police squads. The total of that is two hundred seventy-five thousand. And then four public works vehicles, not just, these are not pickups or sedans. These are the heavy dump trucks that you see during plowing season. These are very expensive for four, for nine hundred thousand dollars, you get four. And we had to order in advance. They will arrive hopefully by this time next year, the time for the plowing next year. In the meantime, we have mothballed the four that they are replacing, just because they're not dry-able, and it's not worth the expense at this point.
Hey, city manager, you, you call out that with the help of a five hundred thousand dollar transfer from the General Fund, we're able to do the two seventy-five in police squad and nine hundred in public works. How much usually do we take out of the General Fund to supplement capital expenditures for vehicles?
Well, we would rather not spend any.
I know, yeah.
If you look in the, on page two twenty-four, you can see at, at the bottom, should be, or, I'm sorry, at the top, transfer from the General Fund, in twenty-three, we transferred two hundred thousand in just to keep the
Okay, that's what I was asking.
From falling. Too, too low. And again, this year, and we're going to go to five hundred. We're also bringing in from the Transportation Fund a couple hundred thousand dollars.
And I don't know if you have an answer, and I'm sure we're still way off, but with the increase of the two hundred and twenty, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, well, twenty twenty-four is four hundred, now we're doing seven hundred, we getting closer to closing the gap on getting on a regular current rotation of vehicles? Are we still that far behind? Yeah, okay.
No, and I'll just refer you without getting into a longer conversation, unless you want to. But we had quite a long conversation about this in April, and we talked about different funding options, and we're afraid we're going to have to come back to those next year.
At some point, yeah. Gotcha.
Makes the conversation.
Yep. Fun. Okay.
All right. Talk about the water fund. All of us have talked about this before. I'll just mention that we are, I'm, I'm pleased to announce that we are adjusting in a constructive way to the loss through retirement of one of our longest-serving public employees, Brian Favor. Pleased only in the sense that we have a good water department, very trained people who work in the lab and work in the streets and work in the, in the holes to repair water mains and so forth. We have some planning going on now, and Brian's always there to help with some insight on that. But we're moving ahead after the first of the year, as we get some more detail from Baxter and Woodman, who was hired about a year ago to help us with the master of water model. We'll, I'll be bringing that to the council. We'll be talking about it. It'll be, I think, a fruitful and a constructive conversation. Okay. So let's go to the airport now, if you don't mind. Page two forty-two. It may be the best picture in the whole book. So this year, we will finally see the, the fencing that has been, to this point, entirely supported by the Congresswoman Underwood's generous grant of support. And that, that security fencing will, will be going up in the spring. As in the past, we have also done some smaller projects. You see a picture on page two forty-three. It's some milling going on on our runway, and one of our access roads through the runway. We also did some apron repairs. And so every year, our local share is either five or ten percent. If it's a federal project, we usually pay about five. If it's a state project, it's usually closer to ten. And, and we inch out what we can. With the revenues we have coming into the airport fund, that's about all we can do. But I will say that through your action here in the last couple of months, we, we have now an approved plat for the outlot at the corner, at the southeast corner of Pleasant and Peace. And we can, I think in twenty-five, one of our goals is to, working with the council, finding an appropriate use or uses for that roughly three-acre outlot, which is very well situated in terms of traffic in our county. We've broken even in the last two years, and we should break even this year, and we project we'll break even next year. We had struggled for a number of years to break even. And if you look on page two forty-seven, you see we've, we've finally hit that goal. Refugees and Recycling Fund is the last of the three enterprise funds, and it is, as I said, pretty much a pass-through. It's going to be a residual this year, and we project a residual next year. But it's not much, about two-point-seven million in, two-point-seven million out. We get user fees. We also have a downtown refuse and recycling program, so that people who live and work in the downtown buildings, from First to Fourth in particular, have a contribution that they make based on a schedule that the council set up four years ago. Comp and liability, we're seeing an increase We're seeing an increase in our costs on the comp and the liability side. I want to talk just a few minutes about that. It came up in the last session we had with the committee, and we didn't have a lot of time to address it, but you can see on page 254 that there is an increase under contracted services of about $100,000, and different things go into that. One is the insurance premiums, which are up about 10-plus percent this year. That is for a number of reasons. Nationwide averages, obviously, the experience of the city, and the expectations now in the insurance industry for higher charges to cover the costs of, not for us at this point, but around the country for law enforcement-related incidents where there have been suits, and we have to defend those suits, obviously. We are not doing that now, but if we had to, we'd have to have the means to do that, and the insurance gives us that, something to back up to. That affects the legal services through, not talking about our city attorney, but the services associated with some claimants and that we offer recompense for, depending on the resolution of certain cases. It's up about 15,000. And then finally, on the liability side, as we get newer vehicles, which is nice, we replace older vehicles, we have to pay more in insurance, just as you do with your vehicles. And then as we make repairs to our buildings, we pay a little bit more, even though we're not paying property tax on the assessed valuation, or the evaluation based on the industry criteria does go up. That explains the $100,000, generally speaking. Health insurance, we have, as we do on the Worker Complacency Side, we have some reinsurance or, excuse me, stop-loss, you might say, so that if there are extraordinary claims, we have insurance to cover us for that because it would cost us too much out of pocket. If it's multimillion-dollar claims, we haven't had those, but if we did, we would need insurance to help us with that. And as you can see, projecting into '25, we have a positive balance. We're looking at, these are, this has been a pretty flat, considering what's happening nationwide, we've been in pretty good shape on the health insurance side. What can I say? We spent a lot of time talking about this. What I'm showing in the budget is the projection of the balances that will be due from the city and what, we're going to meet our, 100% of our obligation as we have in recent years with respect to what the actuary, actuarial reports are. Library Fund. We're going to have to make some changes, assuming tomorrow night, as the board meets to approve what their consensus view was just a week ago. On the levy, we'll have a different levy number on page 267, and then on page 268, under Other Capital Improvements, based on what the budget will be, it's going to be a lower amount there. That was initially intended to have about $470,000 more dollars in there, so we'll make that adjustment. One last thing, as we go to the appendix, you're thinking, oh, yeah, you know, same old stuff. I want you to look, if you don't mind, at something we've been beefing up in recent years, is GFOA expects municipalities to be working toward performance measures. So, starting on page 304 and working pretty much toward the back of, except when you get to the charge of accounts. Eight or nine pages worth of performance measures, and I want to thank Susan Hammond for helping with this. It's, last year, we made a dent in this. This year, it's much more extensive and hope this is useful to people who want to see how do we grade ourselves and the performance of our employees and toward certain goals. So, take your time, look at those, and I'm happy to engage people in conversation anytime Finally, if you look at the back, page 336 and 337, every year, we publish the Full-Time Non-Bargaining Unit Pay Plan. This is management, but management plus, there's also people aren't part of the management team but are not also part of a labor union, who have a range, pay range, and the titles and the pay ranges and the comparable compensations for each are shown in this table. Thank Michelle and Susan for putting this together. When you approve a budget, you approve the pay plan, so the ordinance usually says approval of the budget and the pay plan for $2,000. That's where we are.
That's a great summary. It really is. I think I mentioned it in prior years, too. I was on the Finance Advisory Commission for the city to call for a while, and it was almost like they just printed the GL accounts and handed them to us, and that's what we based our discussion off of. So, having a narrative like you provide, especially the narrative around each department, what do they do, and breaking out their individual budgets, is, I think, incredibly helpful for getting our heads around how the city actually operates from a fiscal perspective. Yes, Alderman River.
Yeah, I echo that. Bill, Susan, Michelle, and everyone else, the way that this has evolved over the years, the content, the way that it's written, and now the measures, outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance. Tom, I'm looking at you. You always got a question.
Sure. I'd be remiss, right? I'm not sure exactly, we went past some of the early revenue stuff, on where do we stand with our property tax levy?
Yeah, let's go back.
We have yet to do that, right?
Let's go back to the front. It appears in a couple of places, but maybe the easiest one to go to is the Transmittal. So, the levy that the council had recommended is on pages, excuse me. I can go to page nine. It's also shown on, chart on page eight, Tom. And that, that comes up for final vote on the 25th. Passed on first reading last week.
So essentially, you're putting $100 back in people's wallets.
Okay, and we're still on task to do that, we think?
Yes.
Okay. We had quite a long conversation about that at our session, and I think the council's had some conversation about it as well, so I appreciate that. And I know we haven't talked tonight about our past due liabilities, but we know the obligations that we face are substantial regarding our past pension shortfalls, which is now at $105 million, and that does not include the 26 or 27 million additional dollars due for employee retiree benefits that are not set aside for at all. We pay those on a current basis. So, we had $130 million past due, if you will, and so, we talked about this last time, about the need for, the desirability of sending some short-term property tax money back versus using those dollars possibly to start to address these past due liabilities. The city has the obligation, not the state, not the federal government, the city. In the notes to the financial statements, which everybody loves to read, but part of that is a conversation in there about pension obligations, and it says, "The state is authorized to establish benefit levels, and the city is authorized to approve the actuarial assumptions." And the city is fiscally dependent to pay those pensions. The city. There's no other body that has that obligation at this point. It is the city. So, all of those liabilities rest on our shoulders, many of which are past due, probably the bulk of that money. And I've been concerned the last conversations we've had about this opportunity we have. We've not had this opportunity. I've been part of this discussion for a long time, and we had no reserves, we didn't have a policy. We set 25%, and we had zero, literally, and now we find ourselves in the unenviable position of having substantial growth, and we have an opportunity to do something with that, to address this longstanding liability that I don't believe anybody is going to fix on our behalf. The state is likely to extend it again, as we, you guys have discussed, and the mayor and the city manager has discussed, probably a 10-year or maybe even longer, because they can't come up with any other solution. The federal government hasn't done anything to bail us out. The state is in no position to do any bailing out. They're $140 billion in debt themselves, which is probably the worst position in all the states.
But they are in a position, sorry to cut you off, but they are in a position to change.
Right.
The actuarial around.
The Constitution doesn't allow them to do anything other than renegotiate with all parties, which other states have done. They've brought all the parties, past retirees, current employees. As well as actuaries and others, and renegotiated across the board with all parties to do something meaningful. But I don't think even in those cases have they gone back to retirees that are long retirees and reduced benefits, other than the city of Detroit, which did that. So, I bring this up, and I would make a recommendation, because otherwise, nothing gets done. I'd be remiss in not doing that to have some conversation. I would suggest, and we may be long past this on the $100 thing, but I would, I would support the city council discussion and review of that, and taking those dollars and applying them on a proactive basis to that long-term liability. And I would suggest that that possibility exists, and because of our opportunity, we could do something along those lines, without impairing any of your current plans, in my view, because I think our revenues are conservatively positioned. I think we'd all agree that the expected revenues have traditionally been a fairly conservative view. The interest income that's in these documents is also very conservative and below what we're going to achieve this year, so I would suggest next year would be at that level or more, which would be substantial. So, there's, there's other, a couple of other things there that could be thrown at it. My suggestion would be along the lines of applying 110% payment until you got down to a 35% fund balance, and that you could afford to do that until you got down to such a level. You could pick a different level, 40%, some other level, but to have that conversation.
City Manager, do you want to respond?
Oh, yes, I do. We did talk about this briefly toward the end of the Finance Advisory Committee meeting in October. So, I don't discount the large numbers that Tom started with. It's not for a lack of fiscal sensitivity or prudence, I will say, so we have to make that clear. You're not being irresponsible, you've inherited that, I've inherited it. There is nothing within our control that will allow us to substantially reduce that. It is frustrating to me, as your chief financial officer these six years, that at the state level, despite a lot of whining and screaming and crying from municipal levels, and particularly this municipality, that there's been absolutely no movement, and there's not likely to be movement on this, even in the veto session. Hopefully, there will be in the spring session. We will see. If you want to buy down some of that debt, you're not going to do it by putting in, say, 3/4 of a million dollars this year, maybe the same amount next year. That doesn't, that's even less an interest on the debt by a lot. Some communities over the years, those who are generally speaking closer to the finish line, say they're 80% funded, and they want to take down that, that 10%, because by law, you have to be 90% now, maybe they've gone towards something called a pension bond. So, you're going to borrow money, you're actually going to pay for that bond out of your General Fund, so you're going to, you're in debt in your General Fund, which is upside down, your reserve, because it's obligated, it's entirely obligated, right? It's now going to also, so it'd be like going into debt to pay debt. But sometimes it works in the short run, if you have a near, near goal. So, we looked at that a couple of years ago. There are other council priorities, we're going to borrow for fire stations, some other things. This year, we have looked at it, and until, two days after the last, the, a couple of days, let's say, after the national election was done, you may have noticed what happened in the bond market. It exploded. Wall Street went in search of easier profit in municipal bond, municipal funds, everything share-wise, except for bonds. And that drove the cost up. So, to attract people to come into the bond market now, they're going to have to give a lot more interest, right? So, the rates went up by 70 basis points in 24 hours, and they're still up there, although they've sagged a little bit in the last week. They're going to remain up there for the next year or two. So certainly, it doesn't make any sense, if we can make 5% roughly in interest, that's what we're making in Illinois Treasury Funds right now, in interest, which is plus, we're not going to spend $6.53 or 6.53% on pension bonds. That doesn't make any sense. Now, pension bonds for 3% interest makes some sense. We're covering it, right? Doesn't make sense if we're upside down. This is not the time to be doing that. Now, that's one option you could do with your, so our reserves right now, we're projecting to be at, at the end of this year, $33.8 million. I hope we get there. At the end of next year, because we're taking 2.5 million out, and we're probably going to be, as you can see, by the way, we're unbalanced this year. Do you see that on page?
Because we're going into our fund balance.
My career, we are unbalanced, because the General Fund Reserve is treated by the audit as the same as the General Fund. Our natural revenues are exceeding our natural expenditures, but when you take 2.5 million out of the reserve, now we're upside down. So, we could be more upside down. I don't see that as fiscal prudence. I could debate that all day long. I don't know if you want to do it tonight, but I've, I've got water here, and I had dinner, so I'm happy to do that. So, what are we gaining? I, I will, we lean in every year to try to reduce our debt. This is one that we can't reduce, we're not in control of it. It's going to take political muscle unseen in the history, history of Illinois politics to make it happen, but we've got to find a way to make that happen, and that's as clear as I can be.
Alderman Walker?
Yeah, you know, I agree with you 100%, because, I mean, yeah, you say something about obligations, which I get 100%, but no, we've got an obligation to the taxpayers to help them when we can help them, and, you know, thanks to you and your staff, you know, you guys have, you know, made us have a historical year. So, I mean, I mean, I know $100 is not a lot to everybody, but to some So, I mean, I know $100 is not a lot to everybody, but to some people, it is. And if we're just putting it there, and it's not even doing hardly anything, it's kind of, it's pointless, from how I look at things, so.
Alderman Verber? And member Terazinski can, you know, certainly fill in. What I think I'm hearing from you is, you know, certainly, how can we reduce what is owed? We can't. We owe that money. But I think it is on DeKalb, not on the state. It's on DeKalb, the city of DeKalb, to look out for the city of DeKalb. And how do we continue to remain a viably financed city, right? And what is that way forward, to member Terazinski's point, to where we can be more prudent to our future liabilities? What does that look like? What is that discussion for just the city of DeKalb and what we have the ability to do, I think, is something we should put some time into?
Alderman Larson.
I hear what Mr. Terazinski is saying, and while I realize that the pension funds, we owe, whether we owe them by 30 or 40, we owe those. I get that. That's not really what bothers me as much. You asked the question, Mayor, are we anywhere near a rotation to have our municipal vehicles in an actual end-of-life cycle the way they should be? We're not there. We're not there. And we're not, we're so not there, we can't even see where we're going to be there. And so, I look at that, and I'm like, throw the pensions out, hope for the best with the state or whatever, knowing it could fall in our laps. But on the day-to-day, you know, we still have miles of streets that are falling into this repair, and we have fleets that are having issues. So, for that reason, I would love, I'd love to have a really great tax break, $1,000 a family. But I look at our budget and what our needs are, and I'm just, I just don't know how that's fiscally responsible to that, you know? Oh, sorry, we couldn't get you your fire. The fire truck broke down. Or the police cruiser didn't start today, so we're one man short.
Or the snowplow that the whole backend came off.
Is gone. Yeah. And you want your leaves collected? Well, that's the same truck that does the snowplow. So, I guess for that reason, I'd love, I live here. My kids live here. I'd love to have a tax break. But I look at everything that this city needs, and I just, I don't see where it's coming from.
Alderman Zada.
I guess, to a degree, I feel like we've been on this course and this deliberate, intentional path to try to get the tax rate down on a greater level, because we are competing with our surrounding communities for people who want to move here. And so, I feel like that is one of the big reasons that we're sticking with this. And I feel like, you know, over time, this will reap dividends. And so, I think we've been on this course the whole year, but perhaps next year, and I know that, Mayor, your intention had been to get down to like a 9.2% rate, and I was excited about that. But perhaps from all the trepidation we're hearing, maybe next year, the intention becomes to be a little extra prudent and, you know, maybe stick with our 9.4, but keep working toward, this year, if we're on this course, you know, they're building so many homes, and, you know, we're increasing our tax base person by person and by business, too, because that tax rate isn't just competing with, you know, individuals who choose to move to our community. That tax rate is also bringing businesses here, right? So, that's kind of what I'm thinking, is that it will reap dividends as we have more and more of these huge businesses coming to town. I see that, that is part of what's attracting them. And even when Ryan Holmes began building in Debonair Farms, they, you know, I was telling him, "Hey, we're really trying to get the tax rate down," and they were excited about that. That was part of what made them feel more confident and more secure in building here. So, that's my thought.
And that does come up in conversations that we have with prospects that are out there that want to move to the city of DeKalb. Tom, I totally hear you. I mean, it's facing us at some point in the future. There is no doubt about it. But I do disagree. There's 1,294 municipalities in the state of Illinois, and a lot of them have exactly the same issue. It's going to require the state to make a modification. Otherwise, every city manager of all those municipalities is going to walk down to the state, hand the governor the keys to the city hall, and say it's yours. Something is going to have to transpire there. But if we look long-term, what you're doing, which I always appreciate, because this man, when it comes to school finances and city DeKalb finances, is amazing. And I've leaned on him for years, if not a decade, on his knowledge and perspective. Outside of Bill Nicholas, you're the second guy I go to for city finances. But when we do talk about long-term, what we are trying to accomplish right now with our tax rate and surrounding taxing bodies are also reducing their tax rate, not at the same pace we are, but they're reducing it, so the needle keeps adjusting. But it is a long-term strategy to create an environment from a taxation perspective that hopefully is going to drive new housing starts, new commercial development, which is going to bring more revenue for us in order to address the police and fire pension. And I agree with Alderman Larson. We're faced with roads, vehicles, we've got all kinds of priorities that we need to do. We're just so fortunate that we can actually fix some things. And for me, roads, vehicles, and things like that are within our control. The police and fire pension crisis, we can't, we can't tax our way out of that one. Go ahead.
Couple things. It's kind of an obvious statement, but once you do it, it's permanent. So, the $770,000 that you forego this year is a permanent reduction. So, in 10 years, that's compounded $10 million that you don't have. So, that is something to be recognized. So, when we talk about this, I hope there is some conversation. I hear one or two people willing to have a conversation, I think, to at least discuss how this road moves forward. I've asked, and I'd be very interested, Mr. Mayor, you go to the IML meeting, IML meetings, and they've had this in front of them for at least 10 years. What recommendation of any solid, structural have they proposed?
Yeah, it's come down to the whole push to 2050, based off of the current political climate that's out there. That's the first thing. But it's like, it's like LGDF, right? Trying to get 10%? We're not going to get 10%. Can we get 6.8% next year? Can we get 7.2% the year after that? That's the goal, where how can we eat this elephant? We're going to eat it one bite at a time. But it is, I don't know, I've only been on the board for three years. I don't know what it was like 10 years ago, as far as a priority. Now, with IML, with Chicago West, this is the top three priorities that they basically have. And LGDF and the other priorities can help fund the police and fire pension crisis as well, not just property taxes. So, everything they're working on right now revolves around restoring revenues to cities, but also adjusting the pension and fire, police and fire pension crisis that so many municipalities across the state of Illinois are faced with right now.
Okay. And, but they have no proposal to do that.
The 2050 is what they're trying to accomplish.
Okay, so that's the 10-year extension?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Which doesn't fix it.
Yeah.
But it's at least a step in the right direction.
Yeah. I'm going to forego any more conversation on this topic. If there is going to be any further discussion at some further future date of any council members that really want to discuss this and what possibilities are, I would be happy to be on subcommittee to actually do that with the actuary, a couple council members, a couple finance advisory committee members, maybe Susan, and sit down and actually do some work on this topic to look at what the alternatives are.
Well, Tom, I don't know if you meant that to be insulting, but I take it as an insult. You didn't mention my name once in that. And where have I been these last six years? I go down to the, let me finish. I go down to Springfield every year, go to the conferences, talk to elected officials at the state level. I've been pounding this. And I'm going to tell you, we could write a check tomorrow for all of the reserve. Boom. Is that what?
I would not recommend that at all.
But that would only be a quarter of what our obligation is.
I understand that.
And so, we'd have no reserves. So, I can tell you right now that you need to be thinking about the reserves, not only for what we're going to need with new development coming, but in addition to that, we are not going to see an even, an even temper of development in the future, every year, year in and year out. Let's not get spoiled what's happened these last three years, because there are lapses. Do you see any new buildings coming out of the ground south of Gurla right now? So, what are you going to do when all of your natural revenues are currently not paying for your streets, right? We had to take 2.5, $2 million out of there. Or your vehicles, and now you've got a shortfall of $2 million. Where are you going to get that? Oh, we paid that out. Darn, we shouldn't have paid that out. Let's see where we are going here. Growth is the hardest thing, not lack of growth. Growth is much harder to manage. And there's more to follow on this, and we'll be addressing this in the early part of the year on the water system and some other things. But if I were in your shoes, I would, I would pause before you think about a Herculean step toward our reserve. That's just my final thought on that.
Any other comments or questions? So, this comes before us tomorrow night, or, sorry, Monday night for first reading. And then, two weeks later...
On December 9th for second reading.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Terazinski, I love the willingness to want to continue to step in on this topic. And you know I'll always be bending your ear, so.
I appreciate that. Just one other comment. Mr. Mayor, you're aware, city manager's aware, I think, that this will be my last session here as a member of the committee. After the first of the year, I was going to put through my retirement, if you will. So, I want to thank everyone, and it's been a privilege to serve.
I was going to cover that at the end, but yes. Ms. Dealey.
I always think of this when I see Tom, and we were talking about this evening. Tom Terazinski is the person who stuck with it and insisted and set up so that we have that part of the water revenue set aside for the capital improvements of the water system. And were it not for his determination and just sticking with it, we wouldn't have that today. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We wouldn't be in the top 10 for best tasting water in the United States of America. So, that's a heck of a thing. But yeah, Mr. Terazinski, I'll express it again. I can't say enough how much all your work's been appreciated, whether I was on the school board or now here in this role. You've always been there. You've always been knowledgeable, and most importantly, you've always been willing to give whatever time necessary to elected officials to help educate them, to make the best financial decisions that they think they can make while up here on their podium.
Thank you very much.
So, greatly appreciate all your service, sir.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate it.
And I'll try and rope you into something in the future.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, any other comments or questions on this? All right, so city manager, we'll discuss it again. I don't think we need to go through the same deep dive on Monday, but we'll have some more further discussion on Monday then. Anything else, city manager?
No, sir.
All right. With that, I take a motion to adjourn from city council.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verber, seconded by Alderman Zada. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, same sign?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Is there a second? Thank you very much. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. Same. Thank you very much.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.